Thinking it would rain and get a little bit more growth. Didn't look like it.
Let's wait till Wednesday.
Monday through Thursday could be done with them?
Yeah. We shut down Thursday. All days they were shut down.
Oh, I see. They just didn't have their things all full. So I wondered if there was anybody open. I think they all...
They're gated up. They said they're just going to go where you say. Look at the weather and it looks too bad.
Are you ready, Don?
You'll need time.
Alright, let's look at the minutes, please. Need a motion to approve?
Under Network Inquiry. It's PFLUGH. That's alright, it's just that the two letters are mixed there. It says Commissioner Flue has inquired about the courthouse network security. I think what I had asked was that we could see some kind of documentation. You said NexTech had come out. And I said, because you have accused me of hacking into the system, that I would like to see some kind of documentation from whoever is going to look into it. And you said NexTech had already looked into it. So since those accusations exist, I would like for the board to be able to verify anything that they're saying. I mean, we are charged as the commissioners with ownership of the property of the county. So that would include all the computers.
Instead of making a speech, would you want to tell me what you would like it to say?
You can put a comma. Since Clerk Harlow has accused me of hacking into the system, you don't have to put me, because that would be you. You can say Commissioner Flue.
Did you? I've never heard you say that.
That's not really what I said, but...
I can play the video if you want. I can play it for them right here, right now, if we wanted to. The video of you accusing me of that.
I didn't accuse you of that.
Yes.
I just said, what do you know about that?
No, you didn't ask me.
No, what I said was, as far as I know, our courthouse system could have already been hacked because our computers were slow. What do you know about that is all I said. You made the assumption.
Okay, we can watch the video if you want. Are you interested in seeing the video or are you going to take my word for it? Because what you said was, and I think you know something about that. You said that we've been hacked and you know something about that. You said it directly to me. So if we need to have some verification here, I'm glad to provide it.
The minutes are your guys' minutes, so please tell me what you guys want.
I see no problem with what you wrote. I would move we approve the minutes.
I have another... I have another correction.
There's a motion on the floor.
I move to amend the motion.
The motion needs a second, please.
I'll second it. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, you have not corrected an additional issue which, under your explanation, for a group of seniors, it says, "Made a correction to previous week's discussion regarding a payment to an attorney by the Sylvan Grove Senior Center. Payment was made from Senior Center private funds for attorney fees, for a group of seniors and others, including herself," which is me, "who were charged with stalking by the LCCOA coordinator." First of all, it was we were accused. We weren't charged and convicted. It was an accusation that was dropped out of court because it wouldn't even make it.
I honestly wasn't going to put anything, but I figured if I didn't put anything, that you would get upset about that.
I don't care what you think. What I'm telling you is that we weren't charged officially. And it says that that's the end of that discussion. The reason why is for requesting open records. The whole thing is tied into because then I asked for an auditing for the LCCOA because we had asked for open records and were accused of stalking because we asked for open records.
I would say accused instead of charged. It was civil matter, wasn't it?
Yes. And that's what I'm saying. It didn't even make it to court because it was dropped beforehand because it was so egregious. But it also should say why. And the reason why is because we were requesting open records.
I don't know what the reason was.
I'll gladly bring you that information too. If you guys want to read about how we went in and requested open records during business hours, while the person was working, and that was part of the report as to our accusations of stalking. Because we went during business hours to an open office and requested open records.
Again, I would say accused instead of charged.
I would accept that. In my motion.
Then it needs to say that I was also accused of hacking into the network for the county.
I don't... I don't think so.
I don't recall.
Okay, well, we'll just play the video here in a minute when I can get it.
You said that several times, but...
Is there any other discussion? Now, the motion on the floor is to accept the minutes with two changes of spelling and with charge being accused. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Nay.
Motion is carried. Minutes are adopted. That is changed. Another letter from Johnson and Camel Engineer... Or Camel and Johnson, I'm sorry. Engineers. Mr. Wallace, please. Finding close two original copies of the AIA Standard Form of Agreement between the owner and the contractor for renovation work on Lincoln Park Manor. To execute the contracts, please sign both copies. I have the county clerk to test them. And return one copy to my office. The second copy is for your files. I would like to schedule a pre-construction meeting as soon as possible with a representative from the commission. The facility, the prime contractor, the engineer, and myself. Please let me know who will be your representative and what days will be acceptable for the representation. I will then get the same information for the others and set up a meeting. I look forward to getting this project started. If you have any... If you or any of the commissioners have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Eric Johnson.
So I can read the records?
So in light of all the accusations against me recently for searching through open records, being accused of stalking, being accused of neglect of my children, being accused of something illegal by asking a road greater operator what he's doing on a particular job, I think it would be only fair to clear the air here on what I'm saying. I've also been accused now of hacking into the county's computer system. I am tired of these egregious claims. And I will not accept any more of them. Here's the video of me being accused. And I actually... It's not, I think you have something to do with it. We'll hear what's said here.
I'm, to be honest with you, I'm protecting the county's computer system.
For your identity.
I think it's not...
For your identity.
And I think you know something about that.
And I think you know something about that.
So far making accusations. Well, you've been making a lot of accusations yourself, haven't you?
That's what I said I said.
So you said that you asked me. You said, "It's been hacked and I think you know something about that."
That's not in our meeting.
No, that's in my office.
That's in a public building.
I wasn't ever witness any of it. I thought you meant you did it...
It's right there in front of you.
I thought you meant you did it in a meeting.
It's right there in front of you. I'm tired of it.
You know what? I still would like to know, you know? And I still argue with NexTech that I have been hacked. Because our system all of a sudden started crashing.
Please bring some legitimate information. Instead of making these accusations and then...
Okay, let's talk about accusations. What about the accusation that you accused my office or you have allowed people to think that my office released HIPAA information? I don't even know what you're talking about. So let's talk about that. What HIPAA information did we release?
I have been told that there have been people with access to my medical records. There have been reports made to various state-funded agencies.
How would we have your medical records? What have you provided to us? Ask me, tell me that.
It's interesting, isn't it?
You've made that accusation, but please back it up. Please tell me. How? What information have we supposedly given? Because I have no idea. I've also been on your website accused of voter fraud. Exactly what kind of voter fraud did I do?
I've never accused you of voter fraud.
I think that website clearly indicated that you guys were looking at me for voter fraud. What? What voter fraud occurred?
You cannot hold me accountable for what someone else says, first of all. If you're trying to say that someone said that you committed voter fraud, that has nothing to do with me. That's between you and whoever that person is, but...
Unless you provided the clerk's office with some kind of medical information, they have no knowledge. They don't even... Do you even know what my policy number is?
No.
They have... Their insurance company does not include them in anything except for signing up for the insurance. That's it. They have nothing. Unless you brought a note from your doctor or something saying, "I can't work this week because of such and such," they have no medical information on you whatsoever.
Well, I find that interesting because I don't even doctor around here, so...
Well, I don't know. That's what we're trying to tell you. She has no information in her office, medical on any of us.
She definitely has my policy, who's on my policy, and what my policy consists of and what my cover is.
No, I don't.
You definitely have my policy.
We have your enrollment form and that is it. And then we get a bill.
If I want a change made, I've been told several times that all I have to do is call up to your office, to HR personnel, and ask for change to be made on my policy. So you're in...
No, you can't. You can't make changes mid-year. You can only make changes once per year.
Regardless, I'm not talking about when. I'm talking about if I want a change. And so therefore, then you have access to the policy itself.
But other than that, we tell you how to do it, do we not? And we help you if you ask us to assist you. We have your enrollment information and that is it.
Well, what I'm telling everyone here is that I've been accused of many things. You're on tape accusing me of hacking into the system. There have been other accusations made.
And I said, what do you know about that?
I think it's kinda like you...
No, you didn't. You said, "And I think you know something about that," is exactly what you said. You didn't ask me a question.
I think it's kinda like you said about the website. Why are we responsible for somebody accusing you of something? We didn't accuse...
The accusation is from someone right here, Terry, that I just showed you. And you want to turn a blind eye because you weren't there, even though there's evidence in front of your face. Sounds familiar to every meeting that we have whenever we talk about something legitimate.
Okay, well, let's just correct this. I apologize. I apologize for making that accusation.
Thank you. And if there is...
I do apologize. I do believe, I do feel like our systems have been hacked. Since January, our computers have been doing this funky weird thing. And it got worse. That week particularly, it got worse. So I called NexTech and I asked them. And they were already planning to come out the day that I said something to you. And I do still believe that we've been hacked. I have a bid. I don't know how I'm going to pay for it. Quite frankly, I think county generals should pay for it, to update our computers. But they have said that our system is still intact. They have told me that. They have assured me. They were supposed to send me a report. They haven't yet. And quite frankly, I haven't had time to follow up with them. And I have bids for that. I have bids for doing patchwork. And I think that we need to do it. Because I'm just going to be honest with you. I think that our society is in the aspect that somebody is always trying to hit us. And not just for that sense. Cloud County has been hit. Martin County has been hit. Butler County has been hit. Central County has been hit. I think that we need to realize that we are in the avenue that there is information. And you know, you're upset because you want access to read-only documents. Our account payable has people's social security numbers in it. You can't have access to that because it has people's social security numbers in it. And if we want to try to figure out a way to do it, then we'll have to have special programming to retract our social security numbers so that we're not having to input everybody's social security numbers in. Because we issued 1099s. Our payroll system has social security numbers that you can't have access to. Our tax system has intangible returns that you can't have access to. There are things that you cannot have access to that we are protecting.
I don't think anyone wants people's social security numbers. That's not the point. The point is the minutes on the website only go back so far. The resolutions are not posted on the website so that anyone could possibly see what resolutions exist.
Then let's have a conversation about that. And like I said, I don't have a problem adding that stuff. But it has to be when we have time. It has to be when our workload allows us to be able to do that. And I know Hannah has been working on it because we have to convert all of those files. Like I said, I have to 2008. Prior to that, we'll have to scan. I have resolutions that don't have signatures on them. So we would have to, like, I have the PC version of it and then you guys approve it and sign it and then we stick them in books that we could post without... Well, we'd have to convert them as well. But otherwise, all the resolutions, we would have to scan.
Well, even the index of the resolutions would help someone to know what they're looking for. Just to be able to know the year and/or the topic of conversation and if they didn't get the actual...
Are you talking like that front page that we have that we use?
The index page. Would be... I mean, that would be helpful for a start. That doesn't... That wouldn't be time-consuming. But I don't know that you have to have the signed version on there. If you already had an electronic version, you're saying it's print that's formulated but not printed and signed.
Okay, let's move on. We have a contract here from Camel and Johnson that needs signing today. Also need to have a representative attend the pre-construction meeting. I would suggest we have Terry do the construction because he's been in construction. He knows what's going on.
Has there been any preliminary discussion about changing the...
That's what this meeting's going to be about.
That's what you're gonna...
We want to get the contract signed. And then I talked to Eric last week and he'd like to get the contract signed and then do it at a pre-construction meeting. I could do it if it's agreeable there to do.
What is going to be your suggestion about that particular situation? Do you have a cost difference estimate?
I don't have an exact one. I'd rather not stay. I think that's something that Royce and Mike need to put together or have put together possibly. And probably, I'm not 100% sure on the correspondence between them and the engineers, so I really don't want to... It's not tremendous, I'm sure, but it is a difference. If it's changed, we will know and we'll have to agree to the change.
Well, this contract is asking us to pay an 18% interest rate if completion of payment is not provided by the date below. And there's no date below.
I think it's the 270 days or whatever it is.
They probably have something in there that has you have to pay within 10 days or... Put them submitting personal...
Paying as we go. As it's completion it says.
So basically, they don't want us to wait till the last day of...
It'll be multiple payments monthly or whatever.
It says, "Final payment shall be made by the owner not more than 30 days after the issuance of the architect's final certificate for payment," or as follows. And then, under Article 7 miscellaneous provisions, "Payments due and unpaid under the contract shall bear interest from the date payment is due at a rate stated below, 18%, or in absence thereof at a legal prevailing... a legal rate prevailing from the time to time at the place where the project is located." So what are the payments that are required?
That depends on the percentage of work. If they have 10% of the work, then they can pay 10%.
I have five industry, some of those. It's a percentage of the work that's completed.
And assuming when they buy the generator and they get it...
Yeah, we do have to pay for them. Yeah. When they buy materials to store, we have to pay for the materials. It's in there. It's what it says in the contract.
Does it require us to pay anything upfront?
I don't think it says anything about it. Other than, you know, if they purchase a generator ahead of time, we'll have to pay for it. I'm sure they're going to repurchase their materials because they probably have locked-in price for a servatory at the time.
So what is your plan? To make payments directly from the web fund by check? Or how are you going to withdraw that money and place it in the fund for the nursing home, in the general fund?
I believe we'll start out with the... The fund is already established.
It was approved to come out of the web fund, so it's directly from the web house?
By check from the web fund each payment separately? How many were... How much... What is the balance that we owe Campbell and Johnson?
I don't know.
Do you happen to know that, Don?
I'm looking.
I'm looking.
And am I understanding that we're making payments to Campbell and Johnson who will then pay Street? Who will then pay their subcontractors?
I'm guessing we pay the contractor.
Normally, we pay the contractor.
The general contractor.
And then they, they are responsible for their subcontractors.
But we're, we will be submitted an application for payment from Campbell and Johnson?
They'll approve the payment before we make it. It goes from the contractor to the architect. The architect agrees that that work's been completed. And then they send it to us. That's the verification that the work is done, it's been paid for.
Since this is going to take over a year, do you think it might be more appropriate to take the sum, the total sum, and separate it from the web fund instead of making monthly payments out of there? I mean, that's gonna make, if you, if anything else happens to spend money in that account, there's gonna be a... I mean, it's not, it's not a huge difference to have to separate. But I guess if we're going to be making payments to both the architect and the contractor out of there, we could be making multiple payments a month out of that fund.
I would just then take it as needed out of the web fund.
I thought you just said that we were gonna be using the fund first, the nursing home fund. You just said that a couple of minutes ago.
Well, they're, no.
No.
We have a fund that we've been putting away money for the generator, correct?
Right, but that's where I'm taking the architect fees out of because that's what you guys approved previously. You guys approved for the entire contract to come out of the web fund. So it will come directly out of the web fund unless you change your motion.
But the balance of what we owe Campbell and Johnson is still there regardless of this $493,000 contract.
Right, it's gonna come out of Fund 44 where it's been previously approved from. Unless you guys change your motions, that's what the motion said. And his original, or his second contract was $43,830. And we paid $16,050.
What is the name of that fund that we're paying that from?
Fund 44, it's home for the aged, emergency repair. I think it says Ian and somebody.
So my suggestion would be to take the total amount from the web fund, put it in the Fund 44 and make payments out of there.
I don't think we have statutory ability to transfer funds like that.
I don't see a problem with paying it out of the web fund if we need it.
You have a motion to...
I would move to sign this contract. I would move to sign the contract with Street flying Campbell and Johnson.
There is, is there a second? I will second any discussion.
Do you think it's wise to sign this contract if we're going to be changing it?
It's an addendum, happens all the time. There'll be change orders probably through the contract someplace where they'll change something in there. So it's the original contract, but there'll be changes to it as we go.
Any other questions? Out on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hail us.
Nay.
Motion is carried. As chairman, I would appoint Terry to represent us in, on this project. Jennifer, you're up.
I need an executive session on the purpose of attorney-client privilege.
How long?
Twenty minutes.
I'd move to enter a executive session with County Attorney Jennifer O'Hare, 20 minutes.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any questions? Who do you want to include in here?
Do we have to have a statement for purpose in addition to the...
Possible offending litigation in which information must be discussed between client and counselor.
And...
Prior to any public discussion.
Do you need, do you want Don in? I guess is my question, do we need Don in?
I don't need Don in.
Okay, we won't include Don at this time. I had a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, hails. Motion is carried. We're going in for 20 minutes, Don.
Okay, that's all, only seven.
Or just set your buzzer, Don. Michael, we're ready for you.
I'm ready. We have to pull you up to chair, we don't have long.
This here is our annual bridge inspection. We now have that down to three bridges that get inspected on an annual basis. I'll just explain the situation. Here are the actual inspection, we should be back on page 11. As you can see, we have three bridges that are on the annual inspection. And the reason why they're on the annual inspection is based on the condition. The worst one of those three would probably be Bridge 105, which is just west of town here on the old highway. I know we've discussed for several years of getting that replaced, but underneath the state programs that will not qualify for those type of structures when there's fracture critical ones around the state that need repairing. Because those are taking priority over anything else.
You know, is, how big is that opening? With that half, with that metal deal we've got put together, the yard covered and open?
It's 24.2.
I didn't realize that was that long.
Yeah, that's pretty fair sized. It's, it's gonna have to be a bridge structure when it's built. You know, it's something that'd be doable if we had the equipment to build. We could go with a steel structure. Actually, all of these structures could be done.
I wouldn't like the Don mega free. Least a piece of equipment. Hire somebody coming to do the piling. Do we have the equipment to swing the arm or will we need an excavator to swing the arm?
I'd have to do some calculations. I think our wheeled excavator may be big enough to swing the steel in. 24 footer, I don't think we could. Just gonna be having the reach to have it centered and get out there. And you're gonna have to have...
Is there a way it's situated where we could use a loader? Set it from the channel?
That would be a tough one. I know it's, you know, it's eight foot deep.
The iron would, I wonder about it. Telehandler, you go up to 40,000 pounds or 10,000 pounds, surely iron's not gonna be on 10,000.
No, no, none of those beams. Just having the reach is our concern. I don't know if we can build a jig and get us another six, eight footer reach or not. If that puts too much pressure on...
The cost around the telehandler for a week or so would be very much...
It will be a learning curve for our guys, you know, having none of them to build one.
Which one are, which one are you referring to here specifically, the number?
105. It's right west of town on the...
The old highway.
North Street, North Street West.
Okay.
It's right there at an intersection.
Okay.
About a mile west of 14, probably something like that, west of 1400. Do, uh, who, who, what crane did we hire to do the, over the whippers?
Crane rental, I believe that's what it was.
They would do piling.
I don't know. Lot of, lot of people don't do piling. Probably have to go to somebody like L and M that actually build bridges that have a driver.
Crane rental.
What's that?
Crane rental, that's not just a division of, uh, brick builders.
I don't know, could be, I don't know. You know, visiting with people, if you don't drive your own pile, I've been told is you gotta go with a bridge building company.
I think they do though.
This... This replacement cost estimate for federal aid and eligible deficient bridges, the replacement cost estimate, that's just the county portion if we were to get...
Contracted.
The...
Not the county portion, that's the total cost for hiring a contractor on this style of bridge. You know, they're not big triple, yeah, they're not big triple-haunt slabs like some of them that we do through the program. So...
And you're saying none or any of these are eligible? At some or none are eligible?
No, none of these would be eligible for any programs that we have through KDOT at the time.
Okay.
Right now, all that's available is the off-system bridge programs.
But they're, but the inspection's only saying that we have some work to do. That none of them say everything is deficient.
Now, if you're gonna replace the pile and stringers on a timber bridge, you're gonna, you have to basically tear the entire bridge out anyways. So I don't think I'd wanna go to all that work and put back in used timber when you can go back with new steel and get a lot of years out of it.
Are you... Is there a timeframe that they put on this?
No.
So what happens if next year you haven't gotten to these three in the suggested manner of repair?
Very similar inspections gonna come back, but we're gonna have to keep an eye on these structures. And it may come to closing them if we do not get them taken care of.
So which one of these three, OS 98, OS 105, or OS 59 are the priority as far as traffic and...
105 would definitely.
Be the priority? So is that something you're going to move forward with immediately?
I can start checking to see if there's a company that we can get to drive some piling, what it's gonna cost and some stuff like that.
Yeah, we have to first, you know, you don't have the funding to do it.
Oh, there's no way they can get, we can get stuff in place that quick, I don't think.
No, you could do the preparatory plans.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Reese.
Reese.
You think we could, time-wise and equipment-wise, be wiser to try to fit it up as to good and else?
There's a lot of work that our bridge crew is needing to do, but, you know, it's a never-ending job.
Yeah, I know, I know. I mean, we got a lot of culprits and things that are smaller that they're...
We have the equipment to...
That we have the equipment on hand to do. I guess I'm, I'm not sure where we would find 135,000. Probably they're not near as hungry as they were a few years ago. But, you know, they can come in here and do it in a matter of time.
You know, a lot quicker. Weather cooperates and...
Well, I mean, what kind of, what kind of condition are the timber beams in? Is it something that isn't gonna last a year? Or are we looking at like a 10-year lifespan on that if you were to reuse some of the materials? I mean, you're saying go in and if you're gonna, you know, do this, the piling and the stringers to just replace everything. But what is the condition of the timber?
It's...
It'll have to come off to do the piling.
It's not in the best shape.
Is this the original?
I'm sure they're, 95% of it probably is, except for the deck. I'm gonna say everything's original.
So it's almost 90 years old. So do we know a lifespan there or...
On a timber bridge in this neck of the woods, it's getting close to being done.
I just find it interesting, they didn't say that the timber, you know, their recommendation is to replace the piling as soon as possible and repair two stringers. Nothing in there about the timber being unusable.
But I think what you're saying is if you're gonna go to all the trouble to drive piling and build in walls, there's no sense in putting the old timbers back on.
Well, there is if it's money that we can put into a different bridge to keep that bridge open if this one will last 10 more years, rather than shutting down another bridge just because we want brand-new material on the entire thing of one bridge.
The material, I don't think is gonna be the huge expense of this.
Labor?
That is gonna be the greatest. You know, 30... Oh, I don't have the exact numbers, but I think it's around $30,000, $35,000 when I priced out steel to do something similar to this size a couple of years ago. I'm sure there's some inflation on top of that, but...
If you went steel, you'll get rid of the white one.
Right, but isn't that $30,000 to $35,000, one entire employee for the year for our department?
It's a, to me, that's a Band-Aid. And, and it's a costly Band-Aid when you're gonna spend either $100,000 or $135,000 to get 80 years out of it versus 10 years out of it. Saving $35,000 today, is that really a true investment for the future?
10 years from now, if all you have to do is replace the timber, that's gonna be, that's not a nick in the budget 10 years from now versus closing down a bridge that then you'll have to completely replace if, as it deteriorates over the next 10 years because you didn't spend that money at the time to have, I mean, you've said you've been understaffed for the last several years.
Putting nine-year-old timbers back under a bridge.
And that's assuming they even come apart without, if you can get it apart without.
Fall apart.
It's just a consideration.
I don't see how you could ever, I don't see how you could ever drive piling with the timbers involved.
You'd have, it's gonna have to be removed to be redone. Maybe you could work on a couple scenarios. What? What have we crossed to do?
You have a fairly full bridge crew now, don't you?
Yes, we have three members.
I think if they had ten is to start building these bridges ourselves, we need to start building these bridges ourselves. If that's where we're headed, if that's what we're gonna try to do.
If we can get the, get the equipments to do it, I think we could do it a couple of year pretty easily.
Didn't we discuss that the potential cost savings would be about forty percent of doing an internal?
I think that is very close to being correct.
You know, if we had three, if these were the only three bridges we were gonna have to deal with in the next ten years, it'd be different, but we've got a hundred bridges out there that's gotta have something done with it, and if we don't start doing it ourselves.
They're gonna close quicker than they get replaced.
I agree, yeah. How, how do they choose which bridges on this inspection they do for the year, these three? How did these?
Watch your.
These are, now, none of these are fracture critical. These base them on just their condition alone. It's something that needs an eye on every twelve months versus every twenty-four months.
But it's fracture critical bridges that have to be inspected every year, correct?
In a separate fracture critical inspection.
Yeah.
This is separate from fracture critical?
Yes.
So we get two state inspections every year, one for fracture critical and this one?
Not every year.
Biannual bridge inspections are two years, which is the biggest majority fall under, and I think the fracture criticals are on a two-year cycle also.
The same ones every two years or just two years, every two years they come to do another set?
They have, fracture critical inspection's different from a regular inspection. It's more in-depth, everything is looked at at arm's length. You know, each pin, each rivet, everything's gotta be looked at within arm's reach because being fracture critical, if one element of that bridge fails, one rivet comes out of that bridge, there's potential for a total failure within that bridge. That's one reason there's more look put into those fracture criticals than there are just your regular bridges. Cause you're basically paying for two inspections for the fracture critical. You got a regular inspection, then you got a fracture critical inspection. Can you hear some direction there, Michael?
Yeah, I'll be sure.
I'll work on that. Bob wanted me to let you guys know that, uh, I've been doing some spot traveling up in the northwest part of the county. Bridge they're working on, they poured again last week on it, and we should be stripping forms on it up in the, uh, Green Valley Road, twentieth, up in the northwest part. Other than that, that's all I have for you today.
I'll just fill you guys in on what we're looking at. The, there were three bridges in this report, OS ninety-eight, they numbered them, OS ninety-eight, OS one oh five, and OS fifty-nine, and it gives a description. So for OS ninety-eight, it's a twenty-three foot timber beam bridge, average daily traffic is forty vehicles, I assume, is what that means, right, forty vehicles? Sufficiency rating out of a hundred percent, this one comes in at thirty-eight percent, and it was built in nineteen twenty-five, and what the inspection indicates that it needs is a replacement, uh, replace the pile at a buttman's. OS one oh five, um, twelve-foot, one-inch timber beam, it has two, does that mean there's a, there's a?
There's a pier though.
A pier in the middle. Average daily traffic forty, sufficiency rating thirty-nine percent. Built in nineteen thirty, and it says, follow recommendations, which, those are printed in here, right? I was, I was looking for those, but I didn't see. Is there a specific recommendation here? Is that separate?
I believe that's separate.
Okay. And it says, replace pile as soon as possible and repair two stringers. OS fifty-nine is a twenty-nine foot, nine-inch steel beam bridge, average daily traffic of thirty, sufficiency rating of forty-six percent, built in nineteen thirty, and it says, remove drift, clean and paint steel stringers. So that one should be, we should be capable of doing that pretty easily, the last one. So did we determine if there's going to be an, an equipment need for us to attempt to redo the OS one, or one oh five? I know you guys were just talking about that, I didn't hear if you came to a conclusion?
If we were to do it, yes, we would have to have some additional equipment that we don't have now.
Something that we need, what you were saying, if we're going to do our own bridges, something that we'd need to purchase to own, as opposed to rental costs?
Rental or contractor installation, either or.
Drive the piling, and then, possible, we'd need a piece of equipment to swing the iron, but the equipment we need to swing the iron wouldn't be very expensive, nothing compared to the piling.
Localsation's gonna be real high on getting a piling drove speculating anyways. May I have anything for Michael today?
Is this, you said the biannual?
No, this is annual.
This is annual?
Yes.
So from last year, is there, is there something that we didn't get done?
There's probably a lot of things.
Sure, there's a lot of.
From this specific report on whatever street bridges they did last year?
Oh, I'm sure. Gonna pull that look. Couple of them been closed.
I would, I, I don't believe I got, I mean, unless it was in that, the one that you gave me that was the full.
Shouldn't have been.
Right, so could you bring that so that we can look at what last year's were? Please, that would be helpful, I think.
It might be up in the commission meeting room too, on the shelf.
Okay, well, have a good week, enjoy today, everybody be cooler tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Fires away.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, I hope so. Jennifer, do you need some time with us?
Do ten minutes again, please.
I move to enter into an executive session. Jennifer, ten minutes, client, attorney. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Those in second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Is it called the same purpose?
Yes.
Right. Yes.
Okay, you ready, Don?
Yep.
Okay, I would announce that following our meeting with the county attorney, Lincoln County Commissioners and Steve Snyder have entered to, decided to seek a mutual arbitration on Fiftieth Road, I guess arbitration is the word, uh.
Mediation.
Mediation, I'm sorry. Mediation on Fiftieth Road, and that mediation, uh, the share, expenses will be shared in the mediation, and that mediation will occur as soon as possible. I have no other statement on that Fiftieth Road. We need to adjourn, or need to enter into an executive session with the county attorney again with a client.
Attorney-client.
Attorney-client, so I would move, we enter into fifteen minutes, county counselor, do I have a second?
We need to have a statement of secondary ca, uh, purpose.
This is a contract with a contract, dealing with a contract.
With the nursing home.
What?
With the nursing home.
I have a second.
Oh, sorry.
And, okay, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we'll go in for fifteen minutes, county attorney.
You always getting your exercise?
It's just starting to start, isn't it? Next week.
Yes.
Yeah, you're right, Howard.
You ready, Don?
Yep.
Okay, Commissioners have authorized the county attorney to proceed with the offer that was made by Lincoln Park Manor, four hundred dollars in additional money to, uh, make an amendment to our contract with Lincoln Park Manor. She will bring that back probably next week for us to approve. Now, this is in relation to the unpaid rent from, uh, two thousand sixteen and early seventeen. Don, do you have anything for us besides what you just gave me?
I just have those papers.
Okay. We have an abatement for the cause of ag lane delineated incorrect for five hundred and fourteen dollars and twelve cents. And we have another one for a mobile home taxed, taxed in the taxing unit for a hundred ninety-six, twelve. I assume that was the wrong taxing unit, right?
It says, it says wrong, yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I would maybe approve tax abatement.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Been moved and second. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Alexis, do you have anything for us today?
Um, I, well, we did not discuss the gravel price change with Michael when he was here.
Oh, yeah, that's.
So I forgot to bring that up at the time, but that's one thing, I just wanted to reiterate that we're all on the same page that we're going to change the price for two thousand eighteen.
Don, would you note that, please, in the agenda on Monday when Michael's here?
Okay.
Probably scheduling fifteen minutes to.
Tracks will be updated, right?
Yeah, we'll update them. Thank you, Alexis, for reminding me, I'd forgotten all that. I thought about it all week, but I didn't.
So just schedule that as a separate item?
Yeah, why don't you just put it at the end of his, hopefully Bob will be here then to.
Um, the other thing I, I, I still feel like we need to discuss is the remainder of the unpaid rent as far as the discussion about where that money goes from the line item from the general fund. Don, I think we had a question, which is if money goes unspent in a particular line item out of the general fund?
It gets, it gets rolled into cash carryover the following year, which then will reduce the amount of what the, that's a lot.
Okay.
We don't have to, I think what, the point she's trying to make is previously we have taken the leftover maintenance funds and put them into Fund Forty-four, correct?
You have one time in the past.
Just once.
I think just once.
So if there is a remainder at the end of the year from any line item in the general fund, is that, let's say it's not gonna carry over, let's say we decide to spend it before December thirty-first. It, can that be spent for another purpose even though it's, it was originally designated in that particular line item? For example, if we were.
It could be in County General, couldn't it?
Can't, the money for that line item is in County General, so overall, it's the bottom line that, that matters. So you can over expend one line item and, um, for one department and under expend in another department.
So if we're.
For example, sometimes in the past, the district court has overspends, and so they, they overspend, and you just hope that the other departments.
Have something left over.
Have something left over.
So could you please, um, tell us what the remaining balance is for this year's budget in the?
I gave that to you the other day. Oh, the remaining balance of this.
Yes, not the, not the.
Maintenance funds.
From last week?
I've got it here.
Yeah, eight hundred for now.
There's the remaining balance in the year.
Yes.
As long as it's in County General.
Yes. Okay, so right now, at the end of October, they had sixty-four thousand, forty-nine dollars remaining, and we have taxes that we'll have to spend out.
Tell me that number, please.
Sixty-four thousand, zero, forty-nine. And then whatever bills you guys have approved and then taxes.
Do you know what the taxes are?
I have them on my desk, I don't know.
Twelve, isn't it?
I didn't even look at them yet.
Twelve?
I think somewhere around there.
We normally just pay half, but what we could do is to pay the full amount, too.
I don't remember for sure, but I, somewhere around that figure, I think is.
What do you mean, pay half versus the full amount?
Normally, we just pay half in December and then half in May because there's not normally a very much budget left.
Yeah.
And I know that they.
That's normally how the money comes in, so.
I think there's still windows that haven't been done, I don't know if you wanna look at that.
But we have the option of whether we do that or not.
Yes. Although, we're getting ready to do it now, if you want me to pay it, we just need to say.
Which would be about twenty-four, is what you're saying?
Here, let me look. No, I think that's total.
No, yeah, twelve or thirteen, if I remember right.
I don't know why I was thinking nine.
Oh, you're saying twelve total, so half would be six.
Yeah. I'm doing that from memory, so.
It's actually lost this year, thirty-four twenty-one.
I'm sorry, say that again, thirty-four twenty-one?
It's six thousand eight hundred forty-two elders and ninety-six cents to.
Okay.
I might be able to spool what is pending minus anything that you might have.
For, for a running balance right now?
We have a total of two thousand one ninety-eight, I remember right now.
A total of?
Two thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty cents.
For?
And open AP.
Oh, okay, okay. So given the sixty-four thousand, forty-nine dollar balance available in the line item of the general fund. We have thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars in total debt to the county, we have an offer on the table for fourteen thousand dollars of that to be paid through an increased rent amount from now, and it was, what did he say, for two years, I think he, or he, he said for the remainder of the contract.
Two and a half years.
Yeah, two, yeah, two.
Roughly two and a half years.
Yes. So thirty-eight thousand, five hundred, less the fourteen thousand, leaves a remainder of twenty-four thousand, five hundred, and I propose that we split that into two payments of twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty, and this year, what we can do, since we're going in. And this year, what we can do, since we're going into December and we have a balance left of $64,049, less than $2,000 odd in pending accounts payable.
Falls whatever December makes.
Let's call it $61,000, December's bills plus, if we paid half, if you say we typically paid half in December, which is 34.21. I'm calling it 61 even, just so we, the 64 less the current accounts payable minus the 34.21 leaves 57.579.
And we're going to have the $5,000 that you guys approved to do for the, wasn't it, little construction? $5,000 for the soffits.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's 52.579. So for the month of December to the end of the year, we have $52,579 left in the line item fund, the general fund for the nursing home. I propose that we retain $12,250 of that as a carryover for next year in order to recuperate 50% of the remaining debt that we will have after the increased payments are deducted as well. And then that will leave next year to determine how we may proceed with the last $12,250 worth of debt. I move that.
But you'll actually, you're actually going to retain the whole amount that's left over, correct?
But that's.
There's no, there's no fund, I mean, we're not going to transfer the $12,000 to it.
But she's saying if any other budgets have been overspent, that money will eventually.
Yes, or it will, or it will be considered carried through into the 2018 budget.
Yeah.
For the general fund.
For the general fund.
And I'm just.
I mean, we can transfer that. We have the capital improvement fund that you can do and you can transfer to, and you can transfer into that Fund 44, too, if you want to.
But if we transfer that money, then it doesn't reduce the tax. Well, and.
I think that you're gonna, I think, I understand the point you're trying to make, but if there's, if there's $40,000 in that fund at the end of the year, that covered the excess on this rent.
That's fine. I'm just proposing at this time that we make it our initiative to dedicate at least half of that knowingly, that if $52,000 worth of bills come in this month from the nursing home, that we're going to reject $12,250 of that, knowing that we are applying that so that the tax burden is less next year.
There won't be, unless something catastrophic happens up there, there's not going to be a huge bill in December. It would have to be a boiler or something like that.
Do you have any idea if there's been, if we're looking at any overspending in any other line items in the general?
Right now, we're overspent in, in what I call storm damage because we're having to pay out the bills. And then I'll have to submit because insurance company really only wants to pay after you pay out. And so I think the only completed project we actually have done is the health department. Everything else is like in limbo.
As far as being refunded by the insurance company? So we're still waiting on insurance refunds?
Yes. So what will happen is if we can't get those projects done and get our reimbursement check, it's going to look like we overspent. And then next year, when you get the income, you have to count that as income and not as reimbursement. So it comes in as reimbursement or as income. What I'm hoping to do is at least submit to him everything that we paid out. And then, of course, mind you, we'll have our $500 deductible. But right now, that's the only one that I know of.
Are we looking like those reimbursements will come before the end of the year, or you're saying probably not?
Well, it depends on the contractors, if they can get their projects done.
Get all their work done.
Okay.
And he did say that maybe he would issue us a partial payment. The other aspect of it is, is we have vehicles and we are just waiting on the auto body shop to get them in. They went ahead and paid out on the vehicles. Again, I counted that as a reimbursement. But if we don't expend it, then I have to modify that.
So I guess I'm just asking for a proclamation from the board that we notify the public that that's our intent to at least recuperate the debt in that way, which it looks like we're on track to do regardless. But I believe it's an act of good faith to show responsibility for the tax dollars that have already been spent.
Yeah, I don't know exactly how you want to word something like that, but I'm, I mean, whatever. I'm in favor of recouping it out of the maintenance fund, there's no doubt. But I think we can, it looks to me like we can recoup it all in one shot.
Well, in order to get it on paper, I think I would just, I'll ask for a motion that we can, that our intent is to retain, I'll call it retain, $12,250 for a rollover. That will go, that amount will be untaxed in next year's.
Couldn't you modify that to a minimum of 12?
Sure.
That way, if the whole thing can be done at once, we can do the whole thing at once.
Sure. I, yeah, I'm agreeable to that.
I'll second.
Okay.
I move to retain a minimum of $12,250 in the general fund line item. You have to help me here, please.
Maintenance.
Nursing home maintenance? To compensate for the remainder of debt owed. Did I say rollover?
Retaining the minimum of the general for the line item, the nursing home maintenance to compensate for the remainder of debt owed.
As a.
Back rent.
As a rollover into 2018. Yes, and please add back rent.
That motion is.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Would you please read the motion, Don?
Alexis would move to retain a minimum of $12,250 in the general fund line item for nursing home maintenance to compensate for the remainder of debt owed as a rollover into 2018, signed in by Terry Finch.
I move to amend the motion to add back rent, as Terry stated, under, right beside debt, the word debt, debt of back rent, debt owed.
To remainder of back grant debt or the other direction?
Either way.
How about debt for back grants?
Sure.
Okay, I'm not a Roberts Rule supporter person, so.
Yeah, could we second that, please?
Yes.
Okay, now, what do we have?
Okay, I have, I'm, again, not a Roberts Rule supporter, so when I type them in, it's, don't attack me next week. Alexis Blue, because I, I'm going to put the motion. I'm going to put that you amended the motion, but I'm going to put what the motion ended up being. I hope this is okay. Alexis Blue moved to retain a minimum of $12,250 in the general fund line item for nursing home maintenance to compensate for the remainder of the debt for back grant owed as a rollover into 2018, signed by Terry Finch.
You have discussion.
And then I'll have a period and I'll have Alexis Blue move to amend the motion, period, signed by Terry Finch, period, and then we'll go back to motion.
And this is the discussion on that amendment?
Okay.
Discussion, we are discussing the amendment, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the amendment? If not, we will vote on the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will abstain. Now, the motion. We will, discussion on the motion. It appears that we are only doing accounting gimmicks here. The fact is that we had a company, their nursing home did not pay its rent, and it is a bad debt. And they appear not to be going to pay all of it. So it doesn't matter what happens. We are going to observe, take in the debt. We are obligated to keep that nursing home up. So whatever those expenses are, will have to be paid. So to me, this is a motion that only tries to clear our conscience, maybe. But it has very little accounting significance other than moving money around. What money isn't spent is always rolled over into cash and thereby we will reduce the levy possibly next year. I guess I cannot support this motion.
It's not always rolled over. It can go into capital improvement fund and go into Fund 44.
It can be rolled somewhere.
Right, my rebuttal to you, sir, is that we were just informed that in years past, we have taken this excess money from this line item and put into a separate fund where we have accumulated a savings account for less, for, I cannot think of a better term than that, where we would then use it to do things such as the repairs that we are now paying cash for in the sum of $493,000. So the accounting is significant in making a statement of accountability that we're, we are assuring that particular amount of money will be recuperated. If we let it roll over where it sits and do not withdraw it, then it does reduce the tax burden for the, for the next year. And that is significant. If we were to do that and be fiscally responsible on every line item, that's a significant savings overall for the entire county. $12,250 is more than several people pay on homes in town. So you're saving a very significant portion. I can't see how you wouldn't support that. It's very logical.
I don't see how you're saving anything, myself.
We are fortunate enough to.
We're just not spending the money.
I believe that anyone would agree that not spending money is equal to saving money. And we're fortunate enough to be in the position where we have this money at the end of the year. You know, we're looking at the last month of the year, hoping that $50,000 and bills don't show up. And I would have good faith that they don't. However, I think it's our obligation to say that we have the intention to recuperate some of this debt. And that is the best way that we can without incurring costs and unnecessary court fees, which we are already in the process of agreeing to an increased rental payment so that we can recuperate some of that in the form of cash as well.
Recuperating means you're getting something. We're not getting anything.
The taxpayers.
We're just.
You, sir, are not receiving anything personally. And I'm sorry if that offends you, but the taxpayers will be reduced, their burden will be reduced next year when that rolls over and is not withdrawn and applied to a separate account that doesn't bear any interest anymore.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is there any intention to go after the owner for the remaining amount that we're reducing the county general from? Okay, so shouldn't the original motion from several weeks ago where we moved to collect the back rent be amended then?
I think, I think the county attorney is going to come in with an agreement next week, and I think that would be the appropriate time to do it.
And I think that motion encompasses any future action by the commission to recuperate that money, which may include accepting this additional cash payment and may include the motion on the floor, which we're discussing, which is to ensure that a certain dollar amount at least rolls over and that will not be taxed for next year, regardless of how much money we assigned, which I can't remember what we, I think we did the same amount this year as we did last year on the budget.
We did $120,000. But the problem, the problem that I see, and I get where you're coming from, but what if another line item spends that money? Then you're not really going, going to reduce the levy for the taxpayers unless you say in 2018, we budgeted $120,000 and in 2019, we're going to budget $12,250 plus.
I think that is.
At that point in time, then when I calculate the levies, then that's truly reducing it, where it may not actually reduce it if somebody overspent.
Okay, I understand, and you're right. That's why I think he said make it a minimum of $12,250. And I clarified with you that right now, we're on track to be pretty much within our budget, less the insurance payments. So I understand there's a lull in time there where we get our reimbursements from the insurance, but we're expecting to get those. So as of right now, we're not aware that a different department has already spent that $12,000. That's my logical justification for that. And I would assume that next year, we would reduce that $120,000 from down to less $12,250.
Other things play factors into it. Tax collection plays a factor into it. Maybe we budgeted more to receive as income than what we actually received. You know, I'm, I'm just, I don't want people to have the misconception that their taxes are going to be reduced by $12,250 when they may not necessarily, because there's other factors that fall into that. To truly get it to occur would be to reduce the budget in 2019. And probably you could even do reducing the budget in 2018, but again, the levies are already set, so.
Which is why, yeah, and I understand exactly what you're saying, and I appreciate the clarification, because we're not saying we're automatically saving that money. But we're on track to be within our budgets that are already set. And if we make it a point to roll that money over in the existing fund, then we don't need to tax for it with the next budget. And we do have the option.
For 2019.
For 2019, right. And we do have that option to withdraw those funds and set them aside as sort of a capital outlay type concept where then they are spent, basically, at that point. So, but I, yes, you're right, you're right. It's not an actual financial reduction until next year if we continue on the basis of reducing that line item when we do our next budget.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Anything else come before this board, before adjourn?
I know that you have not been agreeable to my suggestions to contact the attorney general, which is merely for informative purposes so that we can clarify our role here. So maybe we should start where I started personally, because I made personal contact about this issue when it was brought to my attention several times. So I will attempt to get us one step closer to our, our local home rule jurisdiction here. I move to request an opinion from the county attorney on compliance with KSA 75-4301A and KSA 75-4304.
Do I have a second? Motion dies for lack of second. Anything else? This meeting stands adjourned until 8 o'clock Thursday morning. All good counts payable, hand paper.